Huge, huge facility, fifty thousand square feet. And it's like, guys, let's get a meter that works.
Yeah, I don't think I can make tonight's meeting, so I'll just watch it on TV and I have more questions.
All right, we'll get started with the Senator Gibraltar Planning Commission meeting for September seventeenth, twenty twenty four. We'll get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remember to turn your mics on, I forgot, myself. Katie, can you call the roll?
Sure. Baker?
Here.
Dilk? Cox?
Here.
Brison?
Here.
Hutchinson?
Here.
Mendoza-Bah?
Yeah.
Haye?
Here.
Upholzer? Wood?
Here.
Be looking for a motion to excuse absent members.
Motion to excuse.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, do we have any public comment for matters on the agenda? Okay, be looking for approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and supported, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Um, next we have approval of the previous meeting minutes. Um, we'll go through A first, the motion to approve the planning commission minutes of August twentieth, twenty twenty four.
Motion to approve the minutes of August twenty twenty four.
Check.
Moved and supported, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Next we have the public hearing minutes of August twentieth in regards to the R one horse stable special use.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? And lastly, we have the public hearing minutes of August twentieth for RV Park Special Use in C three districts.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and supported, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? We do not have any acknowledgement of correspondence. Do we have any public comment for matters that are not on the agenda today?
Well, you know, that pertains to us, but everybody has a little picture up there, yeah. So is that what we're talking about?
Sure.
Okay.
Dorothy, I actually think, well, not just up to me, but I would think it'd be a DDA.
Yeah.
Um, matter rather than planning commission.
Is it coming from that?
That's fine.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Okay, my mistake.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Next meeting.
Legitarian mistake, next meeting, we'll do that shortly. Thank you.
Yes.
Good things to come, people await.
The anticipation is getting to us. Um, do we have any other public comment for matters that are not listed on the agenda?
This, I didn't realize, it is under checking, but, uh, site plan review for Gibraltar Fitness Center, twenty eight oh two, isn't that a commercial building? Uh, for storage and stuff?
I believe it is part of the, um, it's the old area performance building, am I, am I correct?
It is, I'm not certain how that one, let me look.
As I know before, they said that firewall had to be put up and ever.
Yeah, I think that was only if you utilized the other half of the inside of the facility. The inside, between the two, I believe. You guys were.
Where's the fitness center going?
In the front, the firewall was between the, uh, south and north end of the facility, I think. Not the east and west, I believe.
According to the diagram, it looks like the fitness center is gonna go into bump out, so the part that projects out from the main building itself.
Correct.
I'm just wondering, I just, I just remember a while back, there was a discussion on it, and they said they couldn't put it in there because it's a commercial building, because they had to big, have a firewall put in there, and that there were vehicles stored in there with fuel and stuff, so.
Yeah, I'm not so sure that's us, though, that might be the building department that's gonna end up telling them that, if that's the case. I, I don't know if that's something that.
I, that's what we discussed last time, and it would go through, so basically for us today, we'll get to that one shortly here, I think we'll go into more detail, but I think the discussion is, are we okay with the use? Does it fit within the ordinance of that?
Okay, because I, I, I've noticed within the DDA district, there's more people doing work within the DDA district without permits, and I know there's been start, stop work orders put on stuff, and it's just really crazy, because it's all happening within the DDA district, and those are the people that should be above reproach. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no unfinished business, and we'll move into the new business section. Uh, we have four items to cover today, the first is section A. This is a sign review for Southern Bay Trucking at two seven eight two one Ford Street. Jane, do you wanna cover briefly?
Yes.
Summary of findings?
Um, so we performed a review for the proposed sixteen square foot pole or freestanding sign at two seven eight two one Ford Street. Uh, the sign meets all of the zoning requirements. Um, the size is not to exceed fifty square feet, uh, with both sides of the sign, it's thirty-two square feet. The setback from the right of way, uh, is to be no closer than twenty-five feet, and the sign is proposed to be setback fifty feet. Uh, it's no closer than one hundred feet from a residential district, and it shall not exceed ten feet in height, and the height is proposed at six point five feet. Uh, in terms of design, noting the nautical theme, uh, there is a sailboat associated with the graphic. Obviously, that's up for the planning commission to decide, uh, in their decision of whether that meets that requirement. We have no concerns at this point regarding zoning ordinance compliance, though.
So everything complies, we just have to decide if we like the sailboat.
If it meets the nautical theme.
Looks nautical to me.
Yeah, I like it, actually, it looks nice.
Yeah, I think it's a nice looking sign, I don't have any issues with it myself either.
I mean, technically, even the name, you could argue was nautical, so.
Right, Southern Bay.
That's fair, I didn't even think about that.
So yeah, if that's all we're waiting for, then I would move to approve it.
Support. Sounds like we have, you good, Katie?
Yep, I got, mm-hmm.
All right. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Second, we have another sign review for Gibraltar Self Storage at twenty-six four hundred West Jefferson Avenue. Um, a little bit more discussion on this one, there is one small item.
Yeah, so this, uh, sign is a wall sign, it's in the M two district. Uh, it complies in regards to the size, um, and we don't have too many, uh, things of note, but the one thing I did wanna note, that the clearance below the sign is supposed to be a minimum of ten feet. It is currently set to be nine feet, three inches, uh, from the ground, so it's eighteen inches lower than the zoning ordinance provides for, but seeing the plans for this, uh, sign and how it's situated on the building, I, I don't think it, uh, impedes any intention of the zoning ordinance. The, I think the intention of the zoning ordinance here is regarding doors and, uh, entryways, and making sure that there's kind of enough, um, visibility above those areas, but this is kind of a flat wall with a wall sign going up, so, uh, I don't know that the clearance with the eighteen inches is a major issue. Uh, that's up to your discretion. Again, uh, the nautical theme, uh, applies here, we noted that does not seem to incorporate a nautical theme at this time. This is a self-storage facility, uh, the sign is fairly straightforward, but that item is also obviously up for discussion for the planning commission.
Now, the way the sign shows on the picture here, is it going to be painted on, or is it going to be a sign that looks like this? Uh, with all.
It's a backlit sign.
White letters.
Backlit sign.
What was that?
It's a backlit sign.
A backlit sign, okay, so.
I think it looks better than the sign that he's already got there.
I agree.
Yeah.
It's cleaner.
Yeah, I was right, I was just wondering.
I thought they were gonna put a lighthouse on it.
And it says it's fifty-one inches from, is that?
That's what they said when they first come.
From the phone number up.
To the top of the G.
I know this.
Okay.
From the bottom of the phone number.
From the bottom up, okay.
Do, Jane, do these folks, I'm sorry, are, are you with the, here because of the sign? No? Okay, I guess not. Uh, don't they, do they know ahead of time, when they're applying for a permit to put up a sign, that the, the city has a, a requirement to have an nautical theme?
I do not intake the actual applications, um, so I, I can't say if they're aware. I would say the expectation for any applicant is to do their due diligence in the zoning ordinance requirements. Uh, that would be the case for any application that's made, and it's all publicly available, so I didn't have direct discussion with them about the nautical theme requirement, so I can't speak to that at this point.
Do you know if the sign is actually made yet? Have they built it?
I would hope not.
All right, well, we're, this is, we're just looking at it, right, this is the first.
Depends on how fast it goes up.
Why?
Well, I could see the sailboat on there, next to the.
Yeah, on the, on the initial sign that they had, if you look, the blue temporary sign, you can see there's a lighthouse on the left and an anchor on the right. I think that, um, to John's point, that was the discussion, if I remember, that was a while ago, though, that was like.
Long time ago.
That was like two years ago, I think, when we, when we had that, but, um.
First they wanted to build a lighthouse, the one that's got the square roof like.
Yeah.
The hip roofs, or whatever you call it, it's, uh, they were talking about putting a lighthouse on it, and then they were gonna put our, uh, welcome to Gibraltar sign on it.
I think that's a good point, Bill, that you made, because we just had the conversation last month, or the month before, around Riverbillies going in, so for consistency, I think we should stick to.
Absolutely.
That, in my opinion, that's my.
Yeah.
I agree.
Personal thought on it.
I agree, I think consistency is important.
Who can take the back or, or call the?
Well, that's really not in the DDA, though, is it? The coroner Derek Jefferson of Breland, I doubt it.
So this, this portion of the zoning ordinance is.
This is just city planning.
It's for the entire city. Uh, the DDA then gets into more specific nautical roping and, uh, higher level of detail.
Every day is a school day.
This is just city planning. Are they gonna leave it, that building that color? That's, uh, that's an ugly color.
It is the color of the brick, yes.
Yeah.
Is, uh, is that something we can go back to them and have that discussion, you think, from a?
Yeah, I can, uh, they've supplied their contact information, and I can correspond with them. Um, now it's up to this body if that's something that you wanna condition, and they can go ahead and move forward if they incorporate a nautical feature, or if you want to come back.
John, I, I'm not aware of the, uh, lighthouse that's going on the roof, what I do know is solar panels are going on there. So if they're gonna do a lighthouse, it might be like afterwards.
They're doing solar panels?
Yeah, it's, I've already, I've been out there a few times, he, he tells me solar panels are coming, they haven't applied for permits or said, submitted plans yet, but that is their intent.
So it sounds like we could have it come back next month with the proposed engineering model of adding some marine item, or we could do a conditional approval that we're okay to go outside of the ordinance in the height, as long as you add.
A nautical theme.
A lighthouse or an anchor or something.
Can we see it?
Yeah, it would be approval of, couldn't we make it where it's approval, I mean, we don't have a city administrator, so.
Well, I was gonna say, we did that for Riverbillies, conditional approval with the incorporation of a nautical element. Remember the front side, it didn't have anything?
Yeah.
Yeah, if they haven't built it actually, because it's, the, the lettering is mounted on a, a raceway, it's a wire trough. Those, what, the, the lettering really doesn't have to be centered on the wire trough.
You can just move it off to the side and mount it on the left.
Yeah, I mean, if the nine foot three was an issue to the bottom of the phone number there, they really could mount the lettering a little bit higher on the wire trough and keep the trough in the same spot. And I'm guessing the trough has to be where it's at, because when they built the building, they should have already had a sign circuit run out there, and it just keeps.
Probably on the inside of the back of the wall, yeah.
So to me, if they haven't manufactured the sign yet, they're, they're not out anything, you know, other than maybe a little time to design something.
What's the thoughts from the team?
Well, so can we have, whomever is responsible for this, can we have them come to a meeting? So we can, I mean, or are we just gonna decide here and then let them know?
Yeah, it doesn't follow our ordinance, it doesn't, the sign doesn't follow our sign ordinance, so we're not, we can't approve it.
Right.
Do we have to make a motion to require them to provide an image with a nautical, you know?
Yeah.
We can, we could just say, yeah, we're not moving forward, they have to come back with nautical items added.
Yeah.
Is that what everybody's?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Motion.
So, motion to speak which Gibraltar self-storage and have them come back in the month of October with additional nautical theme?
Yes.
Okay.
With a sign that follows the ordinance, so, yeah.
You talking about like being too low?
Well, just, they need to meet all the requirements of the ordinance, so, and nautical theme really stuck out as missing.
Yeah.
Are we okay with the, I think we owe it to them, though, to say if we're okay with the height being lower or not, are we okay with that?
I think it looks fine.
I- if the reasoning for the height is, uh, based on what Jane said, you know, windows and doors and stuff, then I don't see a problem with it, you know? It's not a headbanger, there's nobody around nine foot tall, so.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure that that's a piece of feedback.
Do you wanna put a note in to say we're good with the height?
That's, might be good.
I'm sorry, so, uh, is it just the nautical we're going for, or the height too?
We're okay with the height.
Do you, do you wanna amend your motion?
Do we wanna?
Do I need to amend my law?
Or?
You'd have to amend it and, or add it.
Well, I didn't, I didn't say anything about the height, I just.
Do we all agree, though, really quickly, that we're okay with the height?
I'm okay with the height.
Yes, I don't think it's intrusive, I, I think they're probably trying to do it for layout purposes.
I agree.
Exactly, dimensionally how the sign will look.
So I don't know that I need to amend my motion, if somebody wants to amend my motion to require the height, I just said they should come back with nautical theme.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's the motion, got it.
Okay, so we got one motion.
That we need to get through, and then maybe a second motion.
What do you mean? He's not including the height. I think he's amending the whole thing, to say that he's a.
Do we need to, do we need to approve? Is that what you're saying? We need to approve the substandard height?
I think you can do it all in.
We recommended that that be included with the motion, if we're all good with it, I believe that's what I'm hearing.
And I need to do that?
Yeah.
Okay. Then, uh, yes, amend it to, uh, approve the, the substandard height.
Okay.
What, I have just a question, why are we approving it if they haven't, if they don't meet the ordinance yet? We're not conditionally approving it, are we?
No.
No, this is just a requirement.
They have to come back, we're just letting them know that we're okay with the height part.
Yeah.
Don't redesign the whole sign, we just need you to add the marine.
I mean, I don't think we need a motion for that, right, because we're just giving them a note, we're not giving them a decision, right? I mean, we're not really approving this because they don't meet our ordinance.
That's probably.
So we give them a personal decision.
I agree.
That's probably fair.
I think you need a motion to table it.
And I just deny it based on no nautical theme, you don't even have to discuss the height.
Right, just give it a, no.
You made a good point, we could get, this could be a motion to table the item until October's planning commission meeting, where we're requiring, or we're asking Gibraltar Self Storage to come back with a redesign, including a nautical theme. However, we're adding a note that we're okay with the height.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Is that good?
Yep.
Yep.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Well, here, here's what I feel about, I'm okay with the height, but why tell them? If you just deny it based on no nautical theme, when they come back with one with a nautical theme, it might be taller, because they might change everything.
Right.
That's true.
Well, then we restrict it, if we're allowable to eighteen inch difference, then.
Well, it's not eighteen inches, it's nine foot three, so it's only nine inches different.
Yeah. It's only the numbers that are pushing it out.
But I see what Bill is saying.
You put a lighthouse on there, and it's gonna drop it even more.
I see what Bill is saying, though, why tell them?
Yeah.
That you, we don't need to put that in there.
So the original.
Do you want me to read or to amend my motions?
So this is a.
I'm just gonna say, I'm just gonna say.
It's a good point, it's an interesting one, because you don't know how they're gonna redesign it.
Motion to postpone this.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Just, um, yeah.
Is it postponed or tabled?
Yeah.
Postponed.
It's postponed.
Motion to postpone until the applicant comes back with a nautical theme.
Got it.
Second to that motion.
Moved and supported, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Good feedback, Bill.
Just, just a comment that we're just saying, the motion was just for nautical theme instead of not meeting the ordinance, just a comment.
I'm just throwing something out there.
Because, like, what it was said, things could change around a little bit.
It might change it, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's no, not that big of a deal, but.
To Bill's point, though, they might, um, or Rick's, they might come back and then it could be three feet too low, I don't know. Hopefully, that's not.
That's so bad.
I think, I think we'll have some sidebar conversations with them offline to clear that up before next month's meeting. Um.
Okay.
Thank you, that was a good discussion on that one. Signs are challenging for us.
Yeah, they are.
They really are.
They're challenging everyone.
As long as we're not talking about fences, we're good. Um.
Trailers.
Next, we have site plan review for Gibraltar Fitness Center at two eight zero zero two North Gibraltar Road. Um, this was some of the discussion last month on, um, ordinance in the area, uh, or zoning, excuse me. Um, so the applicant brought back site plan for, um, review, essentially, um, we had the.
The architect is, I'm sorry.
Oh, the architect is here, okay. I didn't know that, so that's good, we can go deep into conversation.
Good evening, I'm Rick Bowle, I'm the architect, uh, for the Gibraltar Trade Center on Gibraltar Road. Uh, my address is two nine seven two five Bayview, Grozeal. You have the planner's review letter, which I believe is very thorough, I'm not sure there's much I can add to that. I'm here to answer any questions that anyone might have, uh, to clear up, I believe you do have the drawings in front of you.
We do.
It's the proposed fitness center, it's in the southeast corner of the front portion of that building. Uh, there are two spaces that are intended to be there, one is the fitness center, and the other is, will be a rental unit, there is not a tenant identified yet.
Do we have an answer to the question that was asked by the public earlier in regards to, there was a discussion a year and a half ago, or something like that, where it came up, um, because of the storage behind that front, where boats are stored and stuff like that with fuel, that a firewall would be needed?
Well, interestingly enough, we've actually applied for a building permit from the building department and received that building permit, and I believe they addressed the issue of the firewall. It's my understanding that the storage area is designated as an S one occupancy by the building code, and that the fitness center is a business occupancy, and there is not a firewall separation required between those two occupancies in a mixed-use situation, which is what this is.
And that all ran through the?
The building department, correct.
I, I've never been inside this building, is all the storage actually outside behind it, or is there actually vehicles stored inside the building?
No, there's heated stor, there's, excuse me, heated storage inside.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you look at your drawing, the, uh, I heard someone refer to it as the bump out, but the eastern portion of the building used to be the, uh, boat sales area, and that's the area that we're talking about for business. The longer portion of the building that's to the west of that is boat storage, and both areas are fully sprinkled.
Still supposed to have a firewall in there. Now you're gonna have people in there.
Pardon me?
Now you're gonna have people in there working out. What happens if one of them boats explodes?
I'm not sure I can answer that, other than to say that it is fully sprinkled, and then the.
Well, that ain't gonna help out in an explosion. Um, I don't know.
Do you, um, I can't speak to the rules for the firewall, I don't know the.
Yeah, I, I, so, because this came up a couple of years ago, and I'm, I'm surprised that we don't really have enough information on whether the firewall is actually needed or not. Because that's one of the reasons why you got, they didn't even wanna discuss it a couple of years ago, said, well, it's supposed to have a firewall, um, and we never came back with building plans for firewall, so the idea got dropped. And so, you know, now it's, it's back up in front again, and I personally don't have a problem with the fitness center being there, but I do want it to be safe. I just, never being inside the building, I have no idea where these vehicles are stored. And what's on the other side where there's a chain link fence? I mean, because now that's, there's not even a wall between the fitness center and the, uh, well, it says vacant, future development.
Yeah, right now, that's unoccupied, it's, uh.
Says empty space?
Empty space currently, correct.
And what did you say might go in there?
Uh, one time it was planned for a coffee shop, but I don't know whether that, it'll came for fruition or not.
I remember that, I remember when we discussed that, that was a while ago.
Right now, there's, a tenant hasn't been identified.
So that's gonna add more people in there.
Well, the, the discussion was the coffee shop would be added with the fitness center.
That's not the current plan, as I'm, I'm aware of it.
The initial discussion, they said they would have the fitness center, and then another section where they, you could go and, and have beverages, coffee, things like that.
But nothing's identified.
Currently.
Currently, no.
Correct.
If I may, um, I'm, obviously wasn't here for the previous discussion on this, and I am not going to pretend I'm an expert about the building code, or can speak to the requirement of the firewall. I will say that because the nature of this request has changed, where there previously was food and beverage, which may be a, a different classification, um, I'm not sure if that has anything to, any bearing on this requirement for the firewall, but the duty of this body is to ensure that this meets the zoning ordinance requirements, and actually, the building department requirements are not necessarily germane to your decision, while I very much want to acknowledge the concern around health and safety, especially with the potential storage of, uh, the boats on the other side of this wall, I'm just gonna provide that input as you think about your decision.
Well, our job is basically to decide if it follows the current ordinance and fits into the area, and then.
It'd be the building department, though, that would decide about the firewall, wouldn't it, wouldn't that be?
They would do it, yep.
Yeah.
Yep, which it sounds like they went through them, however, we can follow up after, but.
Well, as far as all the other requirements and all that, this meets that?
Yeah, so I can, uh, just quickly, there's, there was only a couple of things that we noted, um, in terms of parking, it meets the parking requirements, there's, uh, the requirement of thirty-three spaces, and they're proposing fifty-one spaces, and then, uh, the landscaping and screening requirement, uh, has been met with the six-foot privacy, privacy fence and the green belt in place that separates that residential district that's adjacent to the back of the site. Um, all of the other conditions in terms of the setback requirements, um, because this is an existing building, they all meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance, so we didn't note any issues with the zoning ordinance standards. And I, I will just say, they will have to meet whatever the state's building code requirements are, I, I can't speak to those requirements, though.
So, if they already use the parking sometimes for another business, how does that factor in?
So if there's an official agreement between those two businesses on file, we would calculate for shared parking requirements. Um, I, I've heard that there's kind of some, you know, maybe, I don't know if it's an official agreement or a handshake, but there's some overflow parking potential. I, I've heard that there's kind of some, you know, maybe, I don't know if it's an official agreement or a handshake, but there's some overflow parking potentially that goes on that parking lot. Um, there's, you know, almost twenty more spaces than is required by the ordinance standards and it's hard to evaluate without seeing any sort of official agreement between two businesses for shared parking. Uh, but I take, I guess, take that into consideration as you make your decision. Uh, but without having anything submitted in terms of an actual shared access agreement, it's not something that we're going to use to calculate the parking, um, but they do have almost twenty more spaces than the zoning ordinance says is required.
If, if a coffee shop or something goes in on the other end, will that require more parking spaces?
Yes, that would be a, that would change the parking requirements. And so depending on their square footage and how we calculate parking, um, you know, when that tenant goes in and applies for that, they would, we would check the zoning ordinance at that point for that requirement.
I think there would still be plenty.
What's that?
I think there would still be plenty of parking, even if that went in.
With the additional twenty spots and.
Yeah.
Not really knowledgeable if there is any agreement between the two businesses. You have to assume there isn't. And they would occupy all the parking for themselves as a business, right? If somebody parked there from the other one, they allow it, they allow it. I don't know if there's necessarily an agreement.
I don't think there is.
Right.
It's more of a, yeah, go ahead.
Well, he ought to take the sign down then.
No, you guys, you guys agreed to have that put in the bar over there. They're now parking on public property and destroyed it all now because you guys let it go through without proper parking in the first place.
And the way, the way I remember with that parking was there was a different owner when they first started to share parking, right? So the owners changed now? So is that park, that shared parking agreement still?
As far as, no, they still have it.
He's still got the sign up.
Yeah.
The signs, the sign's up. I don't know if there's anything in writing or if that was a deal only sold it. I don't. I can't speculate on that. I think the owner of the property in discussion for the site plan review also owns the field next door and would probably figure out a way to add additional parking if we required it, is my guess. However, I don't know that either. I'm speculating on that one.
Um, well, speaking of parking, though, I agree with Wayne. That property in front right there is pretty much destroyed now. Uh, where it was nice, green grass, you know.
I think that went to, uh.
It went somewhere. I know we discussed it a couple of months ago.
A couple of months ago for discussion?
There was, there was discussion of, um.
Paving it.
Of potentially trying to figure out.
Trying to pave it.
Parking we can find with, that would be safe in the same manner based on the way they're utilizing the property now. We requested that they stop doing that. Katie, you hold me.
They haven't.
So that might be an enforcement discussion.
You also got a fire right in a garage they park right next to it.
You do, yeah.
Entirely different business and owner.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
So let's, what do we, what are our thoughts on the current site plan review for?
What's going on here?
Where's the building department at?
Well, it's always been my understanding, especially the classes from M M L that meets the zoning requirements. I don't think you can turn it down.
Correct.
Except that they didn't before that firewall was a discussion where we needed to turn it down. So, I mean, what's the chances of having the building department or some representative join our meeting next?
Yeah.
We would.
Just to verify what has changed, so that.
Yeah, but like Jane said, though, that's, that's not us. That's the building department.
Right, we're, we're supposed to focus on, on the issue, right?
Yeah, I. Well, what's the issue is the firewall?
The, I, I can't, I, I unfortunately, I just don't think, even if you previously discussed it, at that point, the firewall was still not germane because your zoning ordinance doesn't, and it shouldn't have any say in fire separation. That is, that is a, a life safety issue that falls to the, the building code, um, which is the state of Michigan's building code. So uh, I, you know, that's part of the workflow that that then gets checked by the building department, um, and to meet those requirements.
What's the team think? Any other discussion?
Sa- safety trumps everything, don't it?
I would think.
It does. I just don't know that we.
It's all I heard about the Horse Island Bridge. Safety trumps everything.
I think that's what the building department would be dealing with on their.
On their end.
Well, they gave him, they gave you the permit.
Yeah. That's my understanding. I haven't seen the permit.
At no point did they ever discuss the firewall.
Wait a minute, the story just changed. That's his understanding. He doesn't, hasn't seen the permit.
Yeah.
I've got correspondence from the permit coordinator that the permit was issued. I haven't seen it personally, but it's my understanding it has been issued.
Rather than not the permit was granted.
And our city administrator isn't here to verify.
Nothing to do with, we, we don't have.
It has nothing to do with, with our duty here.
No, but he's the architect. He's not the owner. He's the architect.
And we can't, we have.
That's what happened, that's what happened with a garage going down on Bayview.
We only have oversight on site plan review, so I can't.
Yeah, do we have an issue with the site plan? Can we cite an issue with the site plan?
I, I would think the building plans will show whether it needs to be a firewall.
But, but other than, we had to turn this down before.
Well, it's hard of a discussion here.
Well, before we had to turn it down also because the, the zoning didn't allow for that business, which we discussed, uh, last month.
Yeah, the special land use was already.
The special land use, correct.
I don't know about that. Attached garage to your house gotta have firewall in it. Gotta have a regular burn, two-hour burn door. It's gotta have a burn, uh.
I agree, but I don't know that we can control that. We don't have authority over that.
We don't have authority over that. What you're saying, we don't have authority. We, our duty here is to, to make sure that, uh, this fits within, with, within this the site usage and are we meeting all the requirements?
Well, it should have a firewall.
That's not part of the site plan. That's part of the building plan, which is the building department.
And I mean, if it's that much of an issue and they were here before and they were turned down, I think we need to do our due diligence to s- talk with the building department to see what has changed and suddenly they can change their plan.
Right.
I agree.
I mean, something changed or maybe nothing changed and they just had new people and they just let it go. I don't.
That's why I asked, where's the building department?
I, I just, I, I don't wanna sound like a broken record here, but I wanna emphasize that the building department does not have bearing on the decision of this body. So even if the building department was here and could explain the technicalities of an S one classification versus A B classification and the sprinkling requirements versus firewall separation, ultimately, that is not germane to this body. That, I, I just, I, I just going to.
I see what you're saying. So we just approve the site plan and then whatever else happens later with, uh, the building during.
Yeah, electrical plumbing, design.
During whatever they're doing.
We have to feel confident that those other departments are doing the same due diligence to assure that the requirements are being met. That's how the system normally works. We're not the safeguard for that.
Right.
We're the safeguard for the issues this body does with.
And I will absolutely follow up to, first thing tomorrow morning to get an understanding and make sure that we all have the same understanding of what the uses in the back versus the front and, um, make sure that that's all clear. But I do trust that the due diligence on the building department's side has been performed. I just, I can't speak to the technicalities of that.
But we really don't know because no one has seen this permit. So we really don't know if they did that or not. I mean, we wanna hope they did that.
We don't, we don't have oversight of the permitting process either.
So.
Right?
So in theory, the, you know, this decision is made completely separate from the permit. The, the permit, it will should in effect be issued after this approval gets made. Um, so I can't speak again to the, the status of the permit, but the this decision should be made absent of the permit decision, uh, and what's, because in theory, you would be making this decision before any decision on the permit was made at all.
Right. Well, it does have the coffee and juice bar on here.
I think that was from the special land use. I, I didn't understand that this space was not gonna be built out into the coffee and juice bar.
Well, I'm gonna say based on Jane reviewed it, it meets our zoning requirements. I don't see how it's detrimental in any way to the community. I'll make the motion that we approve the site plan.
Second.
Moved and supported, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Me.
John. Okay. Uh, next we have, thank you, sir.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Next, we have youth soccer field proposal behind Cook Community Center. Um, give me one second to get to that document. It's way down there.
Hold on.
Um.
Soccer.
I'll take.
Very last page, well, maybe not.
It's like right there, yeah.
Last five pages.
Um, so, uh, Gibraltar family approached the city regarding possible dedication of a soccer field in memory of their young son who passed away earlier this summer. Their son enjoyed playing soccer. Um, the family wanted to provide funding to establish the field and future maintenance. Mayor Schumay, Parks and Rec, um, and Public Works Supervisor Bill Kane worked with the family on finding a potential location. Um, it was determined that the best potential location is behind the Cook Community Center. As you guys, hopefully you got a chance to look at it. It's right behind, uh, the facility. There's a map drawn. It's in orange on, on Google Maps. It's essentially behind, if you're on Navarre looking at the front of Cook Community Center, uh, towards the back where the skate park is, it'd be, it's between the back pole barn and the skate park, essentially where the tennis courts used to be.
Is it big enough right there?
That's a pretty good size area.
I think they, when they went out there, they went and did the measurements, was my understanding. It's seventy-five yards wide by. It's not on there for the length. I'm, I'm not a.
It says maximum.
Oh, it's one twenty by seventy-five. Okay. It's a little longer than a football field.
I'm not sure, Bill. Somewhere out here, I thought I read that they were actually making it half size of a normal field.
Uh, it's.
One twenty by seventy-five would be about a half a field. Little less.
It says.
It's the op- optimum, um, what is the length and width of a soccer field? It varies, but the optimum width is seventy-five yards. The optimum length is a hundred and twenty yards. The width can vary between sixty-five and eighty yards, while the lengths can vary between one-ten and one-twenty yards. And based off of this drawing, I'm not sure if this is what they're specifying is gonna be installed.
It's a half. It's at the bottom of page, well, the first drawing. It says it at the bottom. So half field and the net will be on the east side of the field. So the net would be on the east side facing, uh, facing west, so you'd be kicking a ball towards. A sled hill.
This is the pole barn behind the Cook Center, right?
Essentially.
Just some, uh, history. When we bought the, uh, the church, the soccer field was discussed even at that time. I think at one time somebody else brought it up before we bought the church. We argued that there was no room for it, but, but after we bought the church, it kinda say, hey, now we got a little more field, so.
Yeah.
Yep, and one of the issues was that the, it was, at that time, was the placement was too close to the road, but it sounds like that's no longer the case. This placement is farther back, so it shouldn't be as much of an issue.
It's not really being utilized right, right now. Was there any discussion with the, anybody that came in or?
Uh, Mayor Schumay, um, and, um, Director Goris and Bill talked to the family about this.
I don't really have a, have an issue with it. It's just gonna provide something else for kids to do besides staying inside, in my opinion, so.
It don't look like it's gonna interfere with the, um, ice rinks and that either. Who's gonna take care of it, though?
Well, on the report, they say that they're gonna be the ones cutting the grass and putting the goalposts or the net in, taking the net out. They're doing the painting.
Talk comes cheap.
Well, don't we cut that grass anyhow?
Well, you cut the grass, yeah, but, you know, you gotta move the goalposts and all that other stuff and somebody's gonna have a stripe at all.
Yeah, it depends how detailed they're gonna get. I mean, they might just.
What's that?
Depends how detailed they're gonna get, right? I don't know if they're gonna put like.
I don't know.
Can't have it all lumpy and everything, you know?
If it's grass, I mean, we can't really go wrong. If it's turf, that'd be different, but I don't think it's turf. It's grass. So how, we can't go wrong really with this.
Someone that's watching us online, Laura Gray, she says the permits have not been issued.
She's the building permit tech. For the fitness. This is about the fitness center.
She said, the permit has not been issued, she said. I'm not sure which permit.
Which is, which is right because the permit shouldn't be issued until after we approve
Right.
the site plan. So that, that's the right way.
What, are you talking about the building over there?
They're talking about this previous topic.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's some people walking in out of the, with high-veg suits and everything else on it. Working on it already.
Um.
Fitness center?
Yeah.
Sure.
So back to the soccer field, what's the, to me, the soccer field's like a grass field anyways. If they're paying for the net and stuff, there shouldn't, there's really no, if it doesn't work out and folks don't use it and the net gets, you know.
Still grass.
It'll just get rid of it. Yeah, it'll just be grass again.
Right.
I don't think there's a downfall.
Right.
And they're offering up to do something nice for the city, I think. In my, that's my personal opinion.
Well, we have plenty of kids in the city.
So what do we really have to do? We're not giving them the property. I mean, it, all they're gonna do is paint the lawn.
Just use it?
And put two, a net on each end.
I think they're only gonna put one net in. It sounds like just a half field, yeah.
It was my understanding from conversation with the city administrator that, um, he wanted to bring this before the planning commission because it's a recreational improvement. And so while it's not an official site plan, it could be treated as like a basic site plan approval that it went through the proper channels of approval that another recreational facility, if they were putting in a half soccer field, would have to do.
So is this going before the city council and we're gonna make a recommendation? Is that what we're looking for here?
Do we have the final say on this one?
I'm, I don't have that answer. I'm sorry. I, I think you do. It says, his recommended action is to move to approve the soccer field.
I think we'd be able to approve this.
You'd be able to prove it?
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have no postponed or referred items. Commissioner Forum? Be looking for a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Moved and supported, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Mayor Schumay is out today, so he asked me to cover the DDA. Um, so we will go ahead and get started with the DDA meeting for Tuesday, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. We will forego the pledge of allegiance because we covered that in the planning meeting. Katie, can you call the roll?
Schumay, Baker.
Here.
Bilk, Cox.
Here.
Frizong.
Here.
Hutchinson.
Here.
Mendoza back.
Here.
Payet.
Here.
Upholzer, Wood.
Here.
Still here.
Are you looking for a motion to excuse absent members?
Motion to excuse them.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Do you have any public comment?
Hey, wake up.
Pay attention.
That's you now.
It's your turn now, sorry. Took a while, but we got that.
I can holler and you can't say anything.
Okay.
Till after the meeting. Till after the meeting.
Yeah.
Dorothy Wood, um.
Oh, Robin Redmer.
Who is our beautification chairman, and I have been on beautification like since two thousand and three, whatever, always volunteering, but, um, had to get off of that because of council. But anyways, I'm still involved in it. And what I, we handed out is a picture of a piece of equipment that we are looking at specifically for beautification. Because we know that the DPW needs their own equipment. They need snowplows and all kinds of things. We don't need all that. We need a reliable watering vehicle. And we are always using the DPW equipment, borrowing it, whatever. And we always get like the last end of whatever is going to die shortly. That's what we get. And so we've already killed a fire truck. We've already killed the gator. So we want to have our own vehicle. So I don't know how to go about this. I don't know if you require RFPs or how it works through here. I know that, you know, RFPs are important on council and everything, but this is something that we're looking at. And we were hoping that this could be purchased through the DDA for us. Bless you. Um, so that we can use this. Basically, we are working in the DDA area. And so we would like to have something that we can actually get in and not have to use a milk crate to get in. And, um, the DPW guys are great. They help us with everything. But, you know, we always have to borrow their equipment. So, um, Robin is our chairman, and I just wanted her to, um, explain what we do.
Exactly. We'd like to be self-reliant. Right now, we are not self-reliant. We rely on, like she said, the vehicles that we've had in the past. They've broken down all this stuff. And we can't water and we can't continue to beautify the city with plants and flowers if we don't have some vehicle to water with. So that's why we're reaching out to you guys today to see if we could get a vehicle specifically for us that we would take care of and, and maintain and help us maintain the work that we do. Right now, it takes about three hours to water, and that's on a good day. And, uh, the vehicles have been, I mean, we can't even begin to explain how, how terrible it's been. You've got the big, that old big fire truck. You can't take that in small places. It wasn't safe for a person to really drive and see where they're going. You felt like, at least when I was watering. I felt like, well, I'm looking behind me, but I'm not seeing. Am I gonna hit a kid? Am I gonna hit a tree? Am I gonna cause a car accident? You know, because of these big vehicles. This is little. It will get us around. We think it's good with, uh, what, what are, what would meet our needs and not be, uh, asking for more than what we really need or want. We've never asked, we've never stood before DDA and asked for anything in the past. We're grateful for the budget that we have that allows us to do what we do. And I think for the few of us who work on the city, I think we do a really good job with the resources that we have. This would be a great resource, a great help. And we're just asking, what do we need to do to get this vehicle? How could we, what do we need to do maybe to get funds from the DDA so that we can continue to work on improving the city with the plants and the flowers?
Dorothy, how, how big of a water tank do you guys need?
Well, we, when we have the bigger pickup trucks, we had like, I, I'm gonna say close to two hundred gallons. But, which is fine because that takes care of, you know, everything in the city. But I know on this vehicle, you can probably get like a hundred gallons.
I was gonna say, because it's, it's limited to eight hundred pound capacity, so that's like eight, eight pounds per gallon.
Yes. So this one would be a hundred gallons, which is still fine because what we're trying to also do besides this is actually have sprinkler systems put in in some of the areas so that you don't have to keep driving around watering. We don't have to worry about the city hall here. We don't have to worry about the lighthouse area, some of these kind of things. But, um, the hundred gallons, we would probably end up filling that twice on a hot day.
Then we don't collect water from the rooftops.
Pardon?
How come we don't collect water from our community center rooftops? Curious. You know, we're gonna put a new roof on. It's, might be a good idea to think.
So collecting water.
Rainwater.
From the rainwater.
Yeah, because I've been to a lot of these green training programs through Michigan State University. They don't use city water hardly on anything.
Okay. I would love to use the canal water, the river water. That's better than anything we're going to pay for.
Hey, you gotta fertilize.
That's a whole other issue, trying to get the water out of the river. We do that up at, um, Jefferson and Middle Gibb. The sign that's up there, there's a sprinkler up there and it does use the canal water. So we are trying to save money on water because we know how expensive it is.
You'd have to have a pump to pump that out of that barrel into her.
Yeah.
My question is, this thing's electric. When you're operating that electric pump, it's not gonna draw that battery down where you ain't gonna get back. I, I don't know. Ask Bill. He's the electrician.
Say, don't be looking at me for that. I don't.
I mean, this is just a proposed idea of what we want. We don't necessarily have to go with this particular electric vehicle. I mean, yeah, ideally, it would be nice to have something a little bigger that would carry a two hundred gallon tank. But we also know that, you know.
Right.
Money, right? It's, it's about money and it's about of what, what makes good sense for us. What's, how are you gonna get water, like you said, from all these other places to the smaller places, to the planters? Those are the things that we have to consider too.
I'm just worried about it. You guys.
I don't know. We don't.
You guys run the battery down, you're out of Jefferson, you know?
She had a phone.
So can I, can I make a recommendation or have a discussion with them?
Uh, yeah.
What I think you guys, I'll come from the council's side of it, all right? We, what I think we should request is, uh, getting some pricing from, based on specifications for what you're looking for, all right? Try to get a price from a few dealers so we have some comparisons to be able to make an educated decision on what the best purchase would be for you. But try to take into consideration what kind of tank you want to put in the back of there, what kind of weight it's gonna need. So then it should fall into a realm of the size of the machine you're looking for, right? And that'll give you more of a focus of what you're asking for from these dealers, right? Get a more accurate price and they might be spread five or six thousand dollars apart, but based on that information, we could make an educated decision on what would be appropriate for you.
Rick's correct. Yep.
Perhaps you might want to look for something more purposed, you know, a, a vehicle intended for hauling. I say, perhaps you want to look for a, a vehicle that is more purposed for what you want, that comes maybe with a tank and is set up to do, to do that.
Something already prepared.
Something already prepared, yes.
That we don't have to.
Additional expenses, like to add the tank or those kind of things, that would all have to be added in there, so.
Dorothy, how do you guys get your flowers and all that delivered now? Do you guys throw them in the back of your car or? Because I'm kind of thinking.
How we water, we water.
No.
Oh, how you get the plants.
Oh, same thing. It, it's either our car or truck.
Usually they load them in the trailer.
Trailer.
Whatever, yeah.
She gets with the DPW and they hook up the trailer and all that. And they go out, way out Ziegler Road to, uh, Four Star or whatever it is. And they load the trailer full of flowers. The whole trailer's full of flowers.
Would they stay on the trailer while you're delivering them, planting them around town, or do you take them off the trailer and put them?
Take them off the trailer.
So, um.
First of all, because I only drive forward, I can't back up the trailer, so we go and get the plants and come back.
See, that was gonna be my next question because I'm thinking a utility vehicle, and I really don't see you guys taking the water drum out. Especially if it's not bare bones empty. So you can also buy little trailers for these things and keep the water drum on that. And now you got a utility vehicle. You can throw all your plants and stuff and, and, and get everything planted. And when you need water, you, you hook up that little trailer. But, but now you're telling me you can't back the trailer, so.
Not trying to be too technical or, you know, we wanted something that we can actually drive and just go.
Yeah, they usually park the trailer over here and then they take their cars and the other stuff and load them and then take them and plant them.
Here's what I'll do. I'll get with you two ladies, all right? We'll figure out what you're looking for. We'll.
Find something.
Pull out the specs of what we're, and we'll get people to quote us the prices on those machines based on.
And you might want to talk to the metro park because they have these type of vehicles and they do watering and they haul things around as well. So they might have information to share with you on this type of vehicle. Well, you know, I mean, this, we just wanted to start somewhere because every year we ask for something at the beginning of the year, and we're going to get something, and then we don't, and then we get something that starts to fall apart. And there we are at the end of the season, stuck again. And then we're gonna do the same thing come next year. We need a watering vehicle and the same process starts again. So we just want to let everybody know our, our fate here and what we're doing. And because I will not resort to plastic flowers. I'm sorry, I can't.
Thank God.
Don't do that, yeah. Well, it sounds like Rick's.
I'll get with you. I'll get with you and help.
And then we can bring that proposal back to DDA with, with a better plan, more firm plan?
Yeah. No, we'll, we'll get some information for Rick and, and go from there.
Take the pressure off me.
Okay. That's it. That's it. Just wanted to put that out there.
We can always put one of them water tanks on the back of John's, that little red truck he's got.
Hey, you know, I've thought about using it. I can't lie.
Cindy Harmon in Wyandotte has those vehicles. What's the name? These are people that are watching our meeting, so. I'm glad to see that they're getting, that they're engaging.
Engaged, yeah. Um, thank you. Next, we have approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and supported. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next. Next, we have approval of the previous meeting minutes of August twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve the minutes of, uh, last month's meeting.
Second.
Moved and supported. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have no acknowledgement of correspondence. We have no unfinished business. For new business, we have three items. The first two, we'll do them individually. So the first one, A, is authorization of a not-to-exceed amount for accepting a low-responsive bid for the HVAC system at the Gil Telbert Community Center. Um, I believe this is a one. This is a potential move to authorize a not-to-exceed amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand for accepting a low-responsive bid for the HVAC system replacement.
Those bids are being received the eighteenth, Thursday.
Tomorrow is our open.
Tomorrow? Tomorrow. Just as added.
Yep. Yeah, I didn't know that, so thank you. Um, this, as a reminder, was a result of having the excess of, or surplus of eight hundred K from the Middle Gibraltar Road Water Main Project.
Correct.
And this was one of the items that we discussed. Eight items, I think we said.
Eight or nine projects to, um, that you had to be specific about. This is one of those projects that falls into that category. Obviously, we don't know what the total amount is, but I believe.
Maybe less than that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Vince, Vince gave some room there to make sure that we wouldn't have to come back before us.
I motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and supported. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The next item is very similar. Um, this is not-to-exceed for a low-responsive bid for city hall roof replacement. This one, I believe, is one of, this is not-to-exceed a hundred and fifty K also from, or part of the eight to nine projects for the surplus of eight hundred K from the road, so.
Right. And this project is due on the eighteenth as well. So it's just trying to prepare to be able to recommend and issue these, I think, is.
Yeah.
So we don't have to wait for another meeting.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and supported. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Um, last, there's an update regarding, uh, so no action needed here, but it's an update regarding the subarea plan proposal. And I believe city council, uh, met at its August twenty twenty-four regular meeting um, with the expectation that additional information will be provided at the September meeting. In discussing the project with city council, they would like to solicit bids from other planning consultants for the project. As a result, city administration will develop bids specifications and solicit bids for the project. It's anticipated that process will likely be completed by the end of twenty twenty-four. Any questions? Okie doke.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, when you're talking the subarea plan, the proposal, um, you know, the city did do a survey. And, um, one of the questions was, does the, do residents want to see development here? And it was pretty much a no. People don't really want development here. So when, and that's the survey because, you know, Garrett wants to have all the data and that's the data. So does this have anything to do with, uh, development? I mean, you have parking lots in, but for what? If we don't want to see development?
Um, if I may, I'm, I think that the city administrator probably can answer this question more fully, but in my conversations, um, with him and this body about that, uh, the idea was more along the lines of streetscaping and creating a more cohesive look along the streets and maybe some street parking for the existing areas that are in the city and less specifically about development and commercial development and more about utilizing the resources of the DDA. I, I would say probably more along the lines of the city beautification component. Um, but that sounds like it's gonna be something that's a part of the bid specifications, so that would be outlined in the bid specifications that get put together when the bid, you know, the city goes out to solicit those bids. Um, so I, I will defer, of course, to the city administrator, but just to attempt to answer, um, based off the conversations I've had, that it was not focused on development so much as, um, more of a cohesive look and feel of some of the city-owned facilities.
Well, it's very beautification. I think the grass looks much better than cement, so.
Thank you. Uh, okie doke. We have no DDA director's report. We have no table and referred items. We be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and supported. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Adjourn. Right. Isn't that the leverage you want to use to adjourn this issue?
Well, they were supposed to have it.
I know, but this body doesn't.